Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to this program. This is the Clinton McComb Public Libraries Program, the Town Hall Meeting Redistricting in Michigan, as sponsored by the League of Women Voters of McComb County. And tonight's event is a webinar format, so participants, we can't see you or hear you, but feel free at any time to use the chat or Q and A features to ask your questions. And now I would like to introduce our host, Catherine Labune, who is the Chair of the League of Women Voters of McComb County. Thank you so much for being here, Catherine.
Thanks, Sarah. So yeah, as Sarah mentioned, thank you so much for going to sponsor this event with us. And welcome, everyone, to tonight's Town Hall, where we are going to explain the role of the Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission in drawing district lines, and then how you can get involved. For those who are unfamiliar with the League, we are a nonpartisan political organization. We neither support nor oppose candidates or political parties. We work to educate the public on issues related to voting and the political process, which brings us to tonight's event. Now, I'd like to introduce one of the Citizens Redistricting Commissioners, Rebecca Zletta, who is going to start things off.
Hi, thank you for having me, Zletta. That's okay, people struggle with it all the time.
Sorry, and I even asked you before the event.
That's okay, no worries. So I'm going to share my screen really quickly here, and let me make sure I got the right one. Let me turn that into a slide. Go ahead, there we go. Are you seeing the full screen?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, um, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm very happy to come and speak to everybody. Let me tell you a little bit about the Michigan Citizens Redistricting Commission, of which I am a member. So, the history of the MICRC, most people are aware that in 2018, Michigan had a ballot initiative proposal too, which designated that voters and not the legislators are going to take responsibility for a nonpartisan redistricting. And that proposal passed overwhelmingly, it was over 60%, to create the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission. The commission itself is comprised of 13 members who were randomly selected. It consists of five independents, four Democrats, and four Republicans. The MICRC is responsible for redistricting the US Congressional, the Michigan House, and the Michigan Senate seats. Before the commission is allowed to actually draft any redistricting plans, we're required to hold at least 10 public hearings. We've heard a lot of misinformation about that on the public, about why we aren't drawing maps right now, and the reason why we aren't is because we can't. We have to have these public meetings first in order to draw our maps. So, we were required to have a minimum of 10. We actually are having 16, and those meetings are going to be coming up soon in various areas throughout Michigan. The purpose for the public meetings is, number one, to inform the public about redistricting, to share the purposes and responsibilities of the commission, and to solicit information from the public about their potential thoughts on redistricting plans. So, I pulled a couple of the dates. We're actually, like I said, doing 16 meetings, and so I just pulled the ones that I think are probably relevant to McComb County. There's going to be two in Detroit. One is on June 15th, the other is on June 17th. The first one is at the Wayne County Community College Northwest location. The second one is at the TCF Center, which is formerly COBO Hall. Where it says first and second, we actually have two rounds of hearings that we're doing. So, the one that has the second on it is where we will be having a second hearing as well. And then the other locations that are relevant are Port Huron, June 22nd, and then Warren, June 24th. We're also having hearings at the Blue Water Convention Center and the RCC Banquet Center. Redistricting criteria, for people who are interested, is we have a ranked list of criteria that we have to follow when we're drawing our maps. So, the first, most important one is everything has to have an equal population, and then there has to be compliance with the Voting Rights Act. The districts have to be geographically contiguous, and then we have to take into account communities of interest, and I'll touch on that a little bit more in the next slide. We can't give any disproportionate advantage to any particular political party, and we can't favor or disfavor any incumbent elected official. The other considerations that we have are reflecting consideration of county, city, and township border boundaries. We've gotten a lot of feedback on that already, and that the districts be reasonably compact. In terms of communities of interest, this is sort of a new concept for Michigan in terms of redistricting. We are to consider and include populations that share cultural or historic characteristics or economic interests. So, perhaps maybe you've got cherry producers up in Traverse City. They could submit a map to us showing that they're a community of interest, and we need to consider that in drawing the maps to try to keep those communities of interest together. Communities of interest do not include relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates. And anyone in the state can submit us a map showing a community of interest. So, if there's, this is where the public feedback is going to be so important, because we are counting on people to identify those communities of interest for us, and anyone can submit a map, even if it's hand drawn, even if you go on to one of the available sites that are out there that allow you to do it. You could submit to us a map showing us, like, this is something that I think is a community of interest in my particular area, and we will consider that in drawing our maps. So, in conclusion, if you have any questions, ideas, any information you want to give to us, you can contact us at the redistricting@michigan.gov. You can email them into us, we have a website, we have a Facebook page, we have Twitter. You have all sorts of ways to communicate with us. On our website is actually a public commenting tool where you can submit comments. You can also submit, if you have a map that you're interested in, you can submit a map to us. That comes to every single commissioner, we receive those every week, and I know we're all really good about going through those emails and checking everything out. So, any questions? Stop sharing here.
Okay, well, I'm not seeing any questions yet. So, I just wanted to say, thanks Rebecca for being on our Town Hall tonight, and for the brief overview. And now, we're going to go to our League member, Bev Bishop, who is going to do a little bit more of an in-depth discussion about how we got here, and why, and where we're going next. So, thanks so much.
I'm going to drop, guys, you have a nice night, thank you.
Thanks, you too.
Bye.
Okay, well, that was a lovely introduction there. And it's right along those same lines that we'll be talking about. Now, you've met one of the people on the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission. And she did touch on communities of interest. And again, this is presented by not just the Clinton Township Library, but also the League of Women's Voters. And we've always already been introduced, but I would like to mention that we were formed in 1920 as an outgrowth of the suffragist movement. And we are in 50 states, and we have 27 local leagues in Michigan. Membership in McComb County and elsewhere is open to anyone 16 years and over. So, this presentation is going to cover three topics. The redistricting, for sure, the new Michigan constitutional amendment that permits it, and then the new citizen-driven process for drawing those lines. Why did it not move? Oh, okay, thank you. And here's the Michigan congressional districts as they've been drawn already. And you can see that it's based on how much population is in each one. And you can see that some are very large and some are not very compact. This slide has the 14 color-coded districts that elect the members to the US House of Representatives. So, this determines our voice in Washington. And most federal legislators in all state are elected from districts, specifically identified districts. So, the districts divide the state and the people into a geographical area, and each have about the same number of persons in them, determined by the census, of course, which we're all waiting for. So, this is also called drawing the map, and very often, it's just referred to as "the map." And here is the State Senate District, and of course, in Michigan, we have 38 Michigan Senate districts. But in McComb County alone, there are four districts shown here by color coding. So, if you kind of back up and look at it, you can just see how the counties, some are in it and some are in a different district. It isn't just one. This determines our voice in Lansing. Then, let's see. This is the district map for the House of Representatives in Lansing. So, this again is Michigan, I mean, sorry, McComb County. And if you were looking at Michigan, there would be 110 Michigan House districts. And here, we have 10 districts, so you can see where you are. So, Michigan is in an enviable position, having moved the creation of these district lines from the legislature over to an independent commission composed of actual voters, people who were selected mostly at random throughout the whole Michigan. The process is new, and it's not well-understood by all the people. On top of that, the crucial 2020 census has been delayed, and the meetings are virtual. So, everything about it is very different, and that's why we're very glad to come and talk about it tonight. Well, what is redistricting? Every 10 years following the US Census, district lines have to be redrawn. The states determine their own process for doing that. In Michigan, the districts have been historically drawn by the major political party. Well, beginning in 2021, the redistricting process will be done by the Citizens Commission. And federal law requires the redistricting every 10 years, and it has got to be based on the census count. You might recall back in 1964, there was a case called Reynolds versus Sims. The United States Supreme Court determined that the general basis for apportionment should be one person, one vote. You may have heard that more recently. Well, what this rule really means is that generally, districts must be equal in population according to the most recent census, so that each person's vote is equally weighted. So, that is the point. And Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act here blocks the district lines that deny a minority voter an equal opportunity to participate in the political process and elect representatives of their choice. And the 14th Amendment assures equal protection, and came out really after the Civil War. So, what's the problem? Well, redistricting was done by politicians, who of course, would favor keeping themselves and their party in office. And the result of that is what we call gerrymandering, gerrymandering. And here is an example of districts with voters composed of two parties. We have the Purple Party and the Green Party. And assume, this is important, that the voters will vote along party lines for the purpose of an explanation here, and to simplify. We know that doesn't always happen. The map on the left has no lines, and there's only one district. The map in the middle has both, has all lines drawn, but they're vertical lines. And these are causing a voting outcome that will be the total area that matches the party distribution. Can't really miss in those. The next example, the lines were just changed to horizontal. Well, now you can see that since they're drawn that way, the Green Party really, their chance of winning is greatly enhanced. And then, in the last one, this is not a compact, and it's not fair, and it's very difficult to determine why, how many will be won by which ones. Three purple districts and two green, but purple does rule, even though there are more people in it, because of the way they were drawn. So, it's important to understand that right from the get-go. This gerrymandering slide is really something that was published in the Washington Post. And the lines determine the balance between, again, the purples and the green political parties. In the first example, which shows the cracking, that's a good word, cracking of communities to dissipate their influence. The Green Party then wins all four. In the second example, which shows the packing, another good word, packing, and of those, the similar voting patterns into a single district. So, the purple party is likely to win one, while the Green Party is likely to win the other three. So, those are examples of how gerrymandering can work to elect who you want to elect at the get-go. This is the US House, and it is fixed at four, well, this isn't the House. This is the map of districts that vote for the US House, of 435 members. And these are reallocated among the states based on the 2020 census. Well, Michigan's seats in the US House of Representatives were 12 in 1900. And then, because our population grew and others didn't, we actually had 19 seats in 1960. But we have lost congressional seats to other states. It might be that we're not growing as fast as other states. So, we now have 14, and as of last Friday, there's speculation that we will lose one of our representatives based on the census. So, each congressional district has about 710,000 people who elects a representative to the US House for a two-year term, no term limits on that. So, that's the US House. Now, let's look at a very interesting way that a district could be arranged. And this is still the US Congressional District. And this slide shows an example of direct gerrymandering. You can tell by how uncompacted it is and how far-flung across two counties that it is. And it is one of the worst examples in the country. This district is 79% Democratic, and more than 80% of the population is African-American. So, drawing the district in this manner is detrimental, because it packed all other Democrats into a single district while creating disproportionate numbers of Republican districts in all the adjacent areas. That was the purpose of it. Okay, so that's just an example. And here we have, let's go back to Lansing. This is our state house, and this is how the districts are broken down today. The map highlights the districts from the redistricting that occurred in 2012. And these districts will remain the way they are until 2022, when the redistricting commission changes it. There are 110 Michigan members, and each represent between 77,000 and 91,000 residents. The representatives are elected on even-numbered years to two-year terms, with the current term expiring on December 31st, 1920, 2022. Each representative is limited to serving three terms or six years. And again, we're going to head back to Lansing for the State Senate this time, and look at how it's drawn for the Senate. The Senate has 38 members, each representing between 212,000 and 263,000 residents. The senators are elected at the same time as the governor, and serve a four-year term concurrent with the governor's term of office. Senators are limited to two four-year terms. Okay, so that's what needs to be redrawn. Michigan's Independent Citizen for Redistricting Commission is also called the MICRO, or just the commission. And back, as our commissioner stated, in November of 2018, 61% of Michigan, which is quite large, decided to end that gerrymandering by approving Proposition 2. It was an amendment to the Michigan Constitution, and it moved the power for these to draw the election districts from the legislature to the hands of a voter. Well, how? Well, how about we get 13 members? Okay, well, how are we going to do that? It was complicated. But before we even picked our commissioners, we basically looked at the way it would be done fairly, with transparency and impartiality. The commission must be transparent, so to achieve this, they put all past meetings and current meetings as they occur available to you on YouTube, so you can see everything that's happening, you don't have to go anywhere. It must be impartial. How they do that? By putting, as the final choice, it will be four Democrats, four Republicans, and five will be independents, who declared themselves to be independent. Now, the independent could be a member of a small party, or even no party at all. And the commission is required to draw the lines that neither favor or disfavor. So, I guess we're re-talking about that for you. Well, how about a commissioner eligibility? All you have to do is be able to be registered and eligible to vote, and submit your application. So, it was off and running. Many, many applications were put in. In addition, there were some random mailings to ask people to consider applying for this. So, after June 1, there was a random process, and it waited to reflect the geographic and demographic makeup of our state, which then reduced the pool to 200 applicants. 60 were self-identified Democrats, 60 self-identified Republicans, and 80 self-identified independents. Then, the two top leaders in the House and the two top in the Senate. So, four people got to strike out five people they didn't want on the commission, leaving a total of 180 to be reviewed. Then, a final random selection, and I'm wondering if I can... Can you see my highlighter now? Thank you. Anyways, then it turned out to be there would be a total of 13 randomly drawn commissioners. And what do they look like? Like this, four Democrats, five independents, four Republicans, men and women. And if you look at the YouTube, that's who you see. So, the map creation began. And to create the map, they first have to hold all these hearings that were talked about across the state. But now, it's much easier, because you should be able to zoom in and see them. And they include their consulting attorneys, their experts, and the state staff to look at everything. The objective is to create that election district map that does meet those constitutional amendments, and is approved by a specific and defined vote of the commission. This is fun, it goes right to the end in process. So, the hearings, well, 10 at least have to be before the maps are drawn, and five at least have to be after the maps are drawn. So, people get a chance to answer it. And then, in terms of input and transparency, the public is allowed to submit their own plans and all their supporting data for the commissioner's consideration. These become part of the public record and will be there forever. The commission publishes all these plans, and then allows 45 days for public comment. The commission, its staff, attorneys, and consultants may not discuss redistricting matters with the public outside of the public hearings. So, there's no behind closed doors things going on, except if someone puts it in writing and sends it to them, you would get something in writing back. And the new maps will be used in the 2022 elections coming up. Now, these criteria are the most important part. This drives the entire process. After all the other housekeeping, you have got to have an equal population that complies with federal law in the districts. Number two, they must be geographically contiguous. So, those are the two most important things. These are priority, don't forget. Number three, the district shall reflect the state's diverse population and communities of interest. What are those? Well, a community may share a cultural characteristic, a historical characteristic, or economic interests. And if you notice, this is the third most important building block for these districts. After that, comes no packing, no cracking, no favor or disfavor of politicians. You shall consider the boundaries that you already have for county, city, and township, and it must be reasonably compact. So, when they go to draw it, or if you'd like to draw one at home, this would be what you must attend to. Did I miss one? Got it, okay. So, we have had to do some pandemic adjustments. Some of the commission deadlines were adjusted, and everything's been delayed. As you know, the 2020 US Census info has been delayed. Reapportionment of the US Congress members was delayed. We were looking for that last December. Final detailed census numbers, we're looking for in April, but it's likely it'll be out by the end of September. The map deadline, however, is stuck. It is stuck in this proposal and in our state constitution to be November 1. But, an extension has been requested from the State Supreme Court to see if we can change that. You can't just go ahead and change it. It's very complicated like that. Okay, okay, let's talk about the communities of interest. So, what are they, and why are they so important? Well, the communities of interest are specific populations. And this is the third time you've heard them, so bear with me, but this is the best definition we have at the moment. Looking at cultural characteristics, historical characteristics, economic interests. And those folks need to come forward and explain why they would like to be considered together. Now, our commission really has to define this. And they really can't look at any other states, because it's brand-new. It's a new concept, and no one else is really exactly like Michigan. So, a community in one state might not be a community in another. But it is the key to this new voter and citizen-driven process. So, communities of interest are listed as examples, and could include so many more. But it would be maybe a Hispanic-Latino population, adjacent school districts, agricultural groups, a group that shares a watershed or a lakeshore, a Native American tribe, neighborhood associations. And these do matter, because as we said, they're the building blocks to create a fairer and more effective representation. And it allows for groups that would have not had their due and not had their attention to find a way to actually vote in a representative who would pay attention to their interests. So, the final vote of the map, once they have gone through and come up with this map, the commission votes on the map. But before they do, it has to be actually approved by the, that it does match the criteria. So, this is a test. And I'm not sure if staff is going to do this testing, but they have to go back to the commission and say, "Did you pass the test?" And then, the final map is adopted with a majority vote. So, this is one of those majority vote things. It includes at least two commissioners from each political party, and two commissioners that were independent. So, they must all agree that this is what they want. The League is collecting, oh, I have one more thing to say about that one. That was, if the majority approval doesn't happen, and they can't get them all to approve, then the 13 commissioners must each send in their three maps to the Secretary of State, who will then choose it. So, here we go. How does the League of Women Voters get involved in this? So, tonight, why are we here, and what are we doing here? Well, we're very interested that people become educated and get involved. And so, this is a great example of getting involved. And also, the League is collaborating with other groups about this topic, the redistricting, with Voters Not Politicians, Michigan Non-Private Association, and the NAACP. And we are making a special focus on communities of interest, because it's a new concept and a new process, and so much to learn. We will identify them, help people identify themselves, connect with them, and support their participation in public hearings. It can be very daunting to bring your proposal forward at a hearing and make that presentation. And so, we would like to help just with the process. And the monitoring of our commission meetings is taking a great deal of time. As we said, they're on YouTube, and we do testify, and we do coordinate with the key staff of the commission. So, it's been a very interesting time for us. And how can you get involved with this redistricting? Well, all the public is invited to attend the public hearings. In your areas, anywhere in the state is fine, either as an individual or even as a group. If a group of people feel like they'd like to be a community interest, it would be great to have the group come and present one proposal. And the public hearing schedule, so that you can find... And the public hearing schedule, so that you can find them, is at redistrictingmichigan.org. And the contact for the Macomb County League of Women Voters. For more information, especially about communities of interest, is the Gmail attached here. L W V Macomb at gmail dot com. So that is ways that you can get involved. And the state hearings are going to start May eleventh. And the last one that is scheduled now is the first of July. The soonest one close to us, Macomb County, is in Warren. It is on June twenty-fourth. It's at six PM and it's at the banquet center on Mound Road. So that is exactly what we wanted to cover today. And I really appreciate your attention to these matters. Thank you very much. And we would be willing as a panel to take any questions that you might have at this point.
Thanks, Beth. There was a question about the PowerPoint. And asking if that is going to be available. We will check on that. And if, if it is, we will put it on our website. At LWVMacombCounty.org. I can't speak to Rebecca's presentation as a commissioner, but we will check. The other thing I did want to just remind everyone that all of the information regarding the MICRC. Can be found on their website and I'm going to put that in the chat box right there. That is www.michigan.gov/MICRC. And they keep that website up to date with everything that is going on. Um, so. Okay, so we have a question. Oh, thanks, Emily. We will be waiting your email. A question from Jamie Cook from the Macomb Daily. Can you go into a little bit more detail about the request to push back the deadline? What is the latest, do you think would be the latest it should be approved?
Do you want to answer that?
Um, that's a good question. Unfortunately, I don't have any. You know, we, we, the state league kind of coordinates. The, the League of Women Voters of Michigan, the state league coordinates the work with the commission. I have not heard anything from them directly about this, other than they're just monitoring the situation. And, you know, there's, there's literally nothing the league can do about the, the delay in the census, unfortunately. So we are just waiting like everyone else. I do not know the status of where we are with, where the, the commission is with the request to the Supreme Court on pushing back the date, but we can find out.
I think it was telling that Rebecca mentioned that she had felt some of the extreme detail put into our constitutional amendment. Held their feet to the fire or tied their hands. I forget which one she used. But in fact, it does. Because if we get the census, even when we think it might come out, there won't be forty-five days. Then to air some of the maps. You hardly have any time to make the map, let alone put it out for public review for forty-five days. So which thing are you going to not do? Use the census and use some other objects that are available, some, some other data collections that they have been looking at? Or are they going to shorten that forty-five days? Or what will they do? So I think our, our state attorney. Has really done a good job of putting together a request that we get this, this changed. So our, you know, the SOS and the state attorney, everyone is involved in trying to make this happen. So I, I don't think they have an answer. The day the Michigan, you know, Supreme Court says what they will do is the day we'll know it. So that's unfortunate. Well, I have a question to ask of the, the group that might be watching this tonight. You know, how many of you plan to attend a hearing? Just say, yes, I am, or I'll wait. I'd just like to know how much involvement people are looking for. Oh, I've seen a lot of, yes, I am. Good, good. I kind of thought that the commission meetings would be dull and dry. But when I started watching them on YouTube, I, I found them interesting. They're just such real people. I mean, they just asked, is there going to be security at these hearings? And how are we going to hold the hearings? And they're very anxious to do the best job. So I see a lot of IMs. I'm in. All right. Maybe all you guys should join the League of Women Voters too. We could use some help on all this. Maybe. Very good.
Well, if we don't have too many questions, I just wanted to maybe spitball some ideas about communities of interest. That is definitely a new thing. And honestly, we've, we've been kind of struggling to. Sort of figure it out and you know, who is a community of interest and you know, who should we talk to? So I just wanted to throw out to all of the attendees tonight, if you have any thoughts on. You know, hey, we, I think this should be a community of interest or, or have you contacted these folks? They might be a community of interest. So please send those our way. We are always looking to, you know, one of the goals of the league is to educate everyone on the political process. So we're always looking for partners to provide fact-based, nonpartisan information. So I'm just gonna say, if you, if you can think of anyone and want to either. Drop it in the chat or send us an email. We were, we are always looking for ways to reach out to folks. So just, just a. Request there.
Very good.
Catherine, do you want to post your email address in the chat so that people can find you?
Okay, there was a question here. Another, do you think the commission faces challenges at the hearing because the census data isn't finalized? Beth, any thoughts on that?
Well, they definitely are faced with a great deal of challenge and they're very nervous about it. You can tell by watching them on YouTube. That they are anxious to get that data. And they had a meeting last Thursday. And I do believe on Friday was when it came out that the President of the United States was given some preliminary work from the census. And they were told how many total people in the United States and some of the breakdown. And it made it into some of the news coverage that I was listening to. And it said that it looks like Michigan is going to lose one representative to the US House of Representatives. Well, that means their drawing of the lines will be one less person. So right now we'll finish up those terms. And then starting next year, there will be one less. So they have to keep that in mind. But what they really need is the, the gritty work of Michigan. Where are all the data? You know, we are far flung. We have very deep concentrations and then we have very large rural areas. You saw in some of my maps that it took the entire Upper Peninsula and a big chunk of the lower was a huge. And then you go down to, you know, Macomb and Oakland and Wayne. And, and you have to blow up the map to see where it starts and ends. It's so tiny. So if they don't have good data, how are they going to draw those lines? And if they don't draw good lines, how are they going to get agreement to vote? So yes, they want to work together. And in fact, they are very friendly with each other. And I think they forget. Who's the Republican, who's the Democrat, who's the independent? And all of that washes away as they're getting this together. But in the very end, they have to count them. They have to see how many of each are going to agree. And then it will count. So yes, they're very nervous and they face many challenges. And I, I just hope the Supreme Court does come through, our Michigan Supreme Court, by allowing it to go on a little further. But you know, if you don't know how many representatives you need, who can start running? It, it's just a snowball effect. So it's more than just the commission. It's the rest of us, real voters, the real people out here. So that's a really fun question. Thank you for asking. I guess I did such a good job. They know all the details. So that is great.
There's a question here. It sounded like there is a way for special interests to keep influences by using the community map idea.
Like what are you calling a special interest? I, I'm wondering. It, it cannot be a political special interest. That would not be considered. It would have to be, in the old days, I guess if you had a. Cracking and packing, it was for the purpose of electing. A politician and it was done by the politicians. Now it is done by citizens, voters. And it is for some of their interests to further the interest of the voting population. Not, not someone running for a political office. And that is the big difference. So it sounds like there's a way for special interests. And what would that be exactly?
Well, it, it kind of depends on how you're going to define special interest. And I think there. Okay, people are smart and people are savvy. And yeah, there's probably a possibility that. Something you don't think is a special interest is going to try to play a part, a bigger part in, in this than, you know, you would prefer. But I think in this case, you know, everyone has to submit your data to a completely transparent body. So everyone is going to see, you know, okay, so your community thinks that the map should be drawn like this. Well, thank you very much. You can send that in. It, it doesn't necessarily mean that's what's going to happen because of the transparent process, in my opinion. So I'm not opposed to a special interest submitting a map in their favor. Because it really depends on how you define special interests. And what is special interest to you might not be a special interest to someone else. But the fact of the transparency is what I think is going to really play a part in this because you can't. You know, you don't have influence over a politician in, in this way, like special interests had previously, is, in my opinion. Yeah, we hope so. We hope this, this whole transparent process is, is smooth and results in a fair maps for everyone.
Oh goodness, we actually have a few minutes. So some of you may know where the word gerrymandering came from. But I didn't know. So I looked it up and gerrymandering, Jerry, or Gary, as his name was pronounced, was actually. The Vice President of the United States. And I, I won't mention, you know, what his political leanings were. But he was figuring out how to pack and crack and get revoted in and people of his party. So he had actually drawn some of the districts to look like salamanders. And so they put the word salamander and Jerry or Gary together and called it gerrymandering. I just thought it was a cool word, but. So that's some of the trivia you pick up along the way as this is being developed. And it, it could just be a folk's tale or it could be real. I don't know. It's real?
No, that's pretty real. Yeah, that's where it all comes from.
What about Jerry rigging? Is, I, in the South, they talk a lot about Jerry rigging.
Wow, that I don't know anything about.
Same thing. Okay.
Okay. Well, if we don't have any other questions or if people just want to email your questions to us. You know, we can end a little bit early if that's okay with everyone. You know, I'm, I'm fine with staying on a few more minutes if anyone wants to, you think of anything. But that's pretty much what we had for the evening. And so thank you, everyone, for attending. And I'm going to suggest maybe we stop recording at this point. And everyone have a good night.
All right. Thank you all for coming. And I am stopping recording now.